Hello and welcome. Good morning Boyle Heights Community of Schools. Bienvenidos y buenos dias a la comunidad de Boyle Heights. Welcome to our virtual town hall meeting. We are honored that you are with us today. My name is Maricela Sanchez and I'm the Director of Schools, very proud to serve the Boyle Heights Community of Schools. As families join us, please select your language for interpretation. English or Spanish? Please go to the logo, the globe icon at the bottom of your screen, and please select English or Spanish if you'd like to hear the meeting in either of those languages. Bienvenidos y buenos dias. Gracias por estar con nosotros. Soy Maricela Sanchez, soy la directora de escuelas, muy orgullosa de servir a la comunidad de escuelas de Boyle Heights. Cuando las familias se unan a nosotros, por favor seleccione su idioma para la interpretación, en inglés o en español. Vaya al icono de interpretación a continuación, o si está usando un teléfono celular, seleccione más para seleccionar el idioma. Les daremos a las familias unos segundos para seleccionar la interpretación. To start this morning, we know that it is National Principals Month, and we want to honor all our principals within Boyle Heights with this short video. Thank you once again to all our principals in the Boyle Heights Community of Schools, who each and every day are of service to our Boyle Heights families. Sorry about that. Again, for those of you who just joined us and need language support, we ask that you please identify if you'd like to listen to this in English or Spanish. Click on the globe system at the bottom of your screen. Hoy pueden escuchar esta reunión en inglés o en español, así es que por favor haga clic en el globo, en el símbolo del globo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Our agenda for today, we're very excited that we have we have two of our community members here with us. We have our board member representing Board District 2. We have Monica Garcia and Teresa Cortez is here on her behalf. We have Mr. Miguel Santiago, our Assembly Member for the 53rd District. Also, we'll be reviewing with you COVID-19 vaccination efforts, presenting also promoting a college-going culture, A through G credits, college applications, and FAFSA Dream Act. And at the end, we'll have time for announcements and question and answer. So throughout this presentation, we encourage you to ask questions. Our team members are here and they will be answering many of your questions placed in the Q and A. And with that, I'd like to introduce our team members. Our Community of Schools Administrator, Daniel Gettinger. Our Operations Coordinator, Jessica Casares. Servicing our schools in English Language Arts Elementary is Patricia Varela, and then in Secondary English Language Arts is Paola Martinez. In the area of Mathematics, our Coordinator for Elementary is Lizbeth Romero, and our new Coordinator for Secondary is Shanika Honeycutt. Maria Chan is our Instructional Data Coordinator. Michelle Correa, our MTSS Advisors working with schools and families. And in servicing special education programs and services for students in our schools is Jane Pearl and Nadia Aguilar. Hector Ibada supports schools with mental health. Luis Gutierrez supports schools with instructional technology solutions. And lastly, David Gaetan is our Parent Education Support Assistant that is answering the phones in our Welcome Center and is always ready and willing to help. With us today from our local District East office is Veronica Chiofoni, who's a parent coach with Local District East. Also a parent coach with Local District East is Laura Bañuelos. Janet Montoya is here with us today, who's the Administrator overseeing special ed programs for Local District East. And Renee Amescuita is here, who is the Director with Early Education. And it's my pleasure to present to you today and have with us Teresa Cortez, who will be speaking on behalf of Monica Garcia.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez Robles. Good morning, everyone. My name is Teresa Cortez and I'm the Director of Schools and Community Wellbeing in Board District 2. I wanted to share a few words on behalf of Board Member Garcia. As we continue to keep our schools and community safe, we want to thank our teachers, administrators, and staff for their work and support. We also would like to extend our heartfelt thank you to our principals for the work and for being a beacon of light for their students and community during this time. We know it hasn't been easy and they've shown up every day and supported their community. So we appreciate you all and thank you so much. We also want to continue celebrating College Awareness Month. Our administrators, principals, and staff along with our college partners want our students to succeed. Our goal in Board District 2 is to achieve 100% graduation and for our students to go to a college and career path. So if you haven't seen our Facebook Live at Board District 2 for a Go IsLA, please go ahead and join us there. I will add the link on the chat. And then lastly, sending you all safe and fun Halloween, the other those month of the weekend. Hope you all have a great time with your loved ones. And if you have any pictures for any holiday, I mean Halloween events or costumes, or you want to send over your picture of your altar, feel free to tag us at Board District 2 on Instagram and also on Facebook. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much Teresa, and thank you for being with us today. We are very happy to have with us today Assembly Member Miguel Santiago. Thank you so much for being with us. I think we're waiting for for the screen to be shared and Mr. Santiago will be saying a few words. Mr. Delgado, will you be able to share your screen?
Hi, yes, I will. One second. Go ahead, Assembly Member.
Yes, and thank you very much for allowing me to come on today. And I want to say thanks to all our community who was on who really fought hard to keep us all together during this pandemic. And to all the school leadership and principal and everybody else who may be on or has helped us put together. I was asked to come on today and I want to talk about a couple of things that we've done in the legislature that directly impact our neighborhoods. And I want to start off with one of the bigger pieces that we did, and that's the issue of XITE. And this year we got over, and I'm going to speak in rounded numbers today if it's okay with everyone. We got over about $300 million to continue cleaning the worst environmental disaster that we have ever faced in the West Coast particularly, and we know it as XITE. What those dollars mean is we're going to be able to get more houses quicker, faster, cleaned up because some of the contaminants got out about 1.7 miles from XITE, but impacted the Boyle Heights area significantly and the City of Huntington Park, which I also represent. Now, there were other communities that were impacted, but in terms of my district, those were the ones that were heavily impacted. So that is going to be a significant benefit. So what happens if your house was impacted by XITE? They go out there, they test, they figure out whether it's one of the ones that needs to be done urgently, meaning like high risk. The repairs could be anywhere between $30,000 to $80,000 in terms of different sorts of work, both cleaning mitigation and new new plants that they might put up or 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 trees, etc., along with cement, etc. Depending on your situation, they go out and clean up that sort of your front yard, a backyard, and wherever else may have been impacted by lead. So that was a significant way. Now, I want to jump into some, that's on the immediate local. And then we were able to access dollars, like we've got monies for self-help graphics because we felt that was incredibly important to continue to promote the arts and opportunities for our young people. And now we'll be able to expand self-help graphics and the ability to promote art and give those classes to our neighborhoods. Right in our own backyard also, we funded by half a million dollars the YMCA capital construction. And that'll help to build the community rooms and the center to be able to provide a lot of the work that they're doing today. And since most people know the YMCA is a gym, but it's also now become more of a service provider during the pandemic. And a lot of that, a lot of the facility will be built through the monies that we were able to get at the state this particular year. Now, some of you also may remember the Breed Street School. The Breed Street School is over on Breed Street, next to SRS Chavez, a little bit north of where you guys are at, the school that is. And we were able to get over $10 million for that. And what that's going to transform it into is a community center that will be able to house a lot of the direct community services that our community needs, whether they be immigration services, ESO classes, mental health care services. And the reason for getting the dollars was to renovate the area, but to provide that much-needed community space that we often look for when we're trying to do community programming and bring in resources into our community. So those are some of the high-level kind of brick and mortar pieces along with, you guys have seen more activity on cleaning off some of the off-ramps. The SB 1 dollars that we're able to get are continuing to clean up some of the Caltrans area. And in fact, you may have noticed this weekend that the 101 was shut down, both to help fix some of the pieces on the Sixth Street Bridge, with the state is heavily involved in funding, and also to repair from there on the 101 as you go into downtown Los Angeles, some of the maintenance that needed to be done. Now, you can't do this every weekend, right? So this thing has to be planned. That sort of work, enclosures have to be planned months in advance, but we're doing them across the district. And if you've noticed, some of the off-ramps have been getting improved. Now, we do ask for community participation in helping us because we do clean these up. And then sometimes weeks, sometimes months later, they become dirty again. So what is helpful is if you call our office, let us know. But also when we do community cleanups that you might participate in some of that cleanup. That's a kind of an overview of what we've done in direct implementation, direct dollars into the district. Now, there's more, but that's just kind of a highlight. And some legislative things that we did that we think will improve our communities as well is we changed the law and the governor signed it for adult children to be able to have their parents on their health care. And this really is a game changer because there are people who fall through the cracks, who may not be qualified through Medi-Cal, who may not qualify through Medicaid, or any of the other government programs. And currently, private insurance do not have to do not have to cover our parents. So if I'm an adult parent, if I'm an adult child and I go out to the private marketplace and get health care insurance like the ACA, they're not required to cover my adult parent. But we've changed that law to allow that to happen because if we do that, it actually does cost a lot less to give health care to our parents. And like I said, there's parents who fall through the cracks. Now, important to our community as well, the Senator and I, Marina Drazo, we fought extremely hard to make sure that folks that were undocumented 50 years of age received health care coverage through Medi-Cal. And that changes it because before it was 65. Now, there are still medical services and emergencies which it covers, but general basic health care coverage wasn't available before, and now the law allows us. And that'll start about next May. So for the school community and our general community, we're going to be promoting it because we know that in our communities, plenty of people have been left behind without the ability to have health care coverage because Medi-Cal wouldn't cover them. And now that that law has changed, we'll have that opportunity to give to our folks. So I want to remind everybody here that beginning of next year, we're going to begin the sign-ups to allow people who are 50 years and above to get health care coverage if they're undocumented and above the age of 50. Currently, the law says under the age of 26. Next year it will change also to above the age of 50, which will be a big change. Now, I want to talk about free community college. Now, there's been a lot of confusion because the federal government was trying to enact a free community college. You all remember that we did that a few years ago in the state legislature. And even during the pandemic, we were able to keep those dollars. And so community college will continue to be free for our neighbors. And we're going to fight next year to try to make some portion of the Cal State education for free, and we'll ask you to engage in that work with us. And a little bit about what we did during the pandemic, and then I want to get to something that's really important to me after that. Look, we have fought strong and hard, if you recall from the very beginning, to get food distribution in our communities. And we're still continuing to do that because we know that it was hard, people were laid off, and some of our efforts ranged all the way from Koreatown to the one, to Boyle Heights, to the City of Huntington Park, and everything in between. Pico Union McCarthy Park downtown Los Angeles that I represent, where we were helping thousands of people who eat on food assistance. Now, we're still continuing to do that. The lines are getting a little bit shorter. And I want to thank those here who participated to do that. And we sounded the alarm when we weren't getting the proper COVID testing in our communities, and we were able to change some of those formulas in the states where you saw more COVID testing and likewise with vaccines. Now, we are still having some hesitancy from folks in our general community who are not getting the vaccine. And I would ask folks to encourage everyone in our neighborhoods to get the vaccine. I'm pretty sure almost everybody on this call, if not everybody's gotten it, but it's important to do so. And if you're eligible for the booster, you should go get the booster. Currently, it's about 65, and certain classifications of people, some essential workers, health care workers, or people who have underlying conditions, or even individuals who are in close risk by contact with other people are eligible for the booster shot. Now, we are waiting for next week, and the state's already preparing with the feds on getting the orders from all the different clinics in anticipation of the federal government, that the FDA approving vaccines for kids between the ages of five and 11. So we're already starting to work with the clinics, starting to make sure everybody's getting their applications in for vaccines. And we're hoping that everybody who is healthy and eligible has gotten the vaccine. If not, we're going to encourage them to get to do so, and also for their children. So we may come back to you to ask you for help in spreading the word or joining us to go get our kids the vaccine because it's the difference between life and death. And the only way we get back to any sort of normality in the world is people getting vaccinated. There's no other way around it. Now, I'm going to jump over real quick to something that is incredibly important to me. And we have spent a lot of time to get this done, a lot of hard work. And now it's even harder to implement in our communities, and that's the issue of rental assistance. Now, we fought extremely hard, and you're going to see a screen pop up on your computer. We're, we at the state legislature fought extremely hard, the combination of fed dollars and state dollars, to do 100% rental assistance. And this, this, this is available to anyone. It does not matter your immigration status, does not matter whether you're documented, it does not matter whether you're undocumented. In fact, we don't even ask the question. All that matters is number one, it was COVID-related. Or number two, and number two, you had to be income-eligible. So if you couldn't pay your rent because of COVID, and if you meet the income threshold, which is about, in the LA region, about $95,000 for a family of four, if you're below that, you may be eligible for 100% rental assistance on the rent that you missed. And in fact, we have community members in our neighborhood, particularly here in Boyle Heights, which I've just talked to over the weekend, who went through our program. And one lady, community leader, she just posted it on Facebook today, if you look at my Facebook, by the name of Mago, just got qualified for $14,600 in back rent that she had not been able to pay. And so it is eligible. Again, we don't ask for immigration status. You just have to be COVID-related and income-eligible. And so people ask me, well, what is it that I need? You need identification. So we need to be able to identify who you are in order to apply. You need to be able to demonstrate that it was COVID-related. You know, were you sick and couldn't work? Did somebody in your family get sick and you had to watch over them and couldn't work? Did you get fired because the job was no longer available? Were your hours reduced? A number of things that happened in our community, could you not find work, etc., etc., etc.? We need that proof of income. So it could be your W-2. It could be your tax returns. It could be your paycheck stub. It could even be a letter from your employer saying that you had hardship at work. If you don't have any of those, the application allows you to self-verify under perjury of oath that this actually did happen. And this is important because we know that if you were working and the restaurant closed or the hotel room closed and you can't find the owner, no one's going to do this for you, you can self-verify on the application that this did happen. And that's enough to get you qualified, and then you will hear back. What I would tell folks is, and there is a small possibility of paying for future rent. That's a month-by-month basis. If you, like, for example, if you just got laid off and maybe you paid all your rent in the past, and you're moving forward and you don't have a way to pay rent, you can apply for that. Now, there is utility assistance in some cases for folks who have back owed utilities or forward owed utilities. Now, we are prioritizing back rent, not future rent, so just to be clear with everyone. And we're doing it all across the districts. Some of you may have seen some of our workshops, whether they be in Koreatown, Pico Union McCarthy Park, downtown, the City of Huntington Park, or or here in Boyle Heights. Now, if you could scroll back down for a second. Giselle, I want to, the blue flyer, crap. I want you to, everybody here, to just pay attention to the hours, please. And this is really important. We're over at the YMCA. We, our office is coordinated with the YMCA. In fact, we got them a small grant to do this sort of work. And the hours that we're doing this is Monday through Thursday, 2 to 5. Tuesdays, we're doing 9 to 4. And Fridays, we're doing 9 to 3. So those are all the different hours that people are doing rental assistance over there. But we do recommend that you make an appointment. And we tell this to everybody, but they just show up and you may have to wait. We did one in Huntington Park this week. We did two of them. Hundreds and hundreds of people show up. The good news is we were able to help some people. The rest of the people, we had to take their numbers down and put them in a future appointment. In this particular case, we get lines. Sometimes there's one person, sometimes there's no one, sometimes there's dozens of people. So we just recommend you get an appointment. Make it easy on yourself, and the number is right there, 213. I'm using, I don't have my glasses on, so I'm going to get closer here. 434-1746. And this flyer is incredible. So I'm going to ask everybody to take out your cell phone and take a picture of that flyer. And it's right here in our very own backyard in Boyle Heights. I'm going to give you another five seconds. Five, four, three, two, one. Now, if, Giselle, you can go to the next flyer. Thank you. These are some of the other organizations that we're working with. It's breezy, well, I don't have my glasses, I can't read this well, a little print there on the other one. But the program is Housing is Key. If you look at your cell phone right now and you put Housing is Key, you, when you hit Enter, it goes automatically to a state website. And that, and the application is there. You will need an email address. So if you don't have an email address, get an email address. If you need help getting an email address, when you show up to this location, they'll help you there. But you know, you can also do this from home. We did the website in a way that you could just apply from home. You don't need to go to seek help. But if you do, we have places that are doing help. So right there, we pulled up the website, Housing is Key. And when you go down, you'll see Ayuda con la Renta, or COVID-19 Rent Relief. And you just punch one of those. And yeah, when you punch it, there you go. You start getting automatically in there. What you will need to do is set up an account. Aplica ahora. Apply today. Looks hard, but it's not. It takes us about 15, 20 minutes to do for somebody. But the hardest part is folks having all their documents. So get your documents in order. Now, I'm going to show you how easy this is. Giselle, could you pop in an address? So up here, you pop in where you live. So let's say you could do our office if you want, Giselle. I think it's 350 Yeah, West Forest Street, yeah. We're just doing my office. Just so everybody could get kind of an idea. Click it. Oh, you know, it's probably not, yeah, there you go. There you go. Oh, it's up there. It's up in the first level. And then it tells us what jurisdiction we're in, and then you can finally begin the application process. So it really does not, it just wants to know where you're at so that they know what the, you know, what the income threshold eligibility is, etc. Are you, are you an owner of the property or are you a renter of the property? I am a renter of the property. It really is easy. Everybody's seeing this. Just ask you, are you, do you belong to any tribes? No. Or the answer might be yes. In my case, it's no. We're just going to do a little bit, just to kind of get an idea. Let's say three, I want to pick a number, three people in the house. And then here's where the income threshold is. So I'm saying three people in the house. As long as I make $85,000 and below, let's say, I don't know, let's do it so I qualify. Then it goes back to the application. Then you start. That's as hard as it gets, folks. That is as hard as it gets. It pops you right in the application. You do need an email address. So this is the part that you set up an account. But from here on, we'll stop it here. But you guys get the picture in terms of how easy it is to apply. Once you break, once you've done those pieces, it'll ask you to set up an account. And when you go into accounts, so you could do this from home. At some point in time, maybe we could do a workshop for you guys and have those people who think they might need help and might be eligible to apply. Sometimes it matters days, it matters weeks, you get a response. Now, remember, thousands and thousands of people are applying. So if you don't get a response the next day or a couple of days, no, no one's ignoring you. No, there's no reason to call. They are processing thousands and thousands a day. It's a big state in the state of California. So we're in thousands and thousands a day. So it will take a little bit to reply back. But the good thing is, if people apply in our neighborhoods, the law protects them from getting evicted until next April the 1st. So with that piece of paper, your landlord cannot evict a person once they've applied for this. Now, there's a lot of other do's and don'ts and details to it. But the general thing I wanted to share with you is the 100% rental assistance. So I know I spoke a little bit longer than maybe anticipated, but I wanted to make sure that I explained that. And we went through that because it's such an important program that we fought incredibly hard to do at the state. And I want to make sure that our community is eligible for it. Thank you. And takes advantage, obviously.
Well, thank you, Assembly Member Santiago, for that incredible information, also your Also, your advocacy on behalf of our community and all the programs and uh resources that you've brought to the Boyle Heights community. Um, we appreciate your partnership for being here today to address the community. And speaking of which, I, I do want to do, give a special shout out to all the folks joining us on Facebook instead of the Zoom. Um, Assembly Member Santiago mentioned his Facebook page. Many of the resources are available there. So uh, if you want, you can uh go over to his page, take a look at those resources and then hop right back to ours to rejoin the meeting.
And go to our Instagram and join right now. I just started it, so I'm looking for friends. So join, join. And plus, we post the information there. We post where the workshops are happening. We post the resources constantly. So if you go to Miguel Santiago, AD fifty-three. Miguel Santiago, AD fifty-three. Uh, that's our Instagram page. So go on there and get on there. Oh, somebody just did it from right now that's watching. This is awesome. I just started, folks. So we're, we're, we're pumping out information on, you know, I go to a lot of these workshops in the morning and say, we're doing the workshop, come on over. And then people start coming over. But uh, if you could jump on and follow our Instagram page, uh, our Twitter account, and Giselle will put it on the chat for Instagram. Oh, we just got another person who was on there. Uh, we pump out information. If you're looking at my Instagram, you'll look at it. Two days ago, we're in the Sea Huntington Park for a resource. We don't do all of them every day, but I highlight some of them. The day before that, we're doing it in Huntington Park again. I think, and I think this Friday or another place, we'll be in a different place. We were constantly putting flyers up there about some of the program that we're doing. If you take a look a little bit further down on our Instagram page, once again, Miguel Santiago, AD fifty-three. Uh, you'll see the one in Huntington Park that happened. And then the next one that happens on November the third, uh, you'll, we'll post the flyer today for uh the one in uh Bull Heights so that you guys can download it from there and just go and join. But join it. We're pumping out information, vaccines, what we're doing, rental assistance, internet assistance, all kinds of stuff. Thank you very much uh for having me on, Dana.
Absolutely. And uh, speaking of social media, I, I want to share a great story with our community. I know that many of you are following us on Twitter, Instagram. Um, last week, uh, we had a community member contact us on Twitter, say, hey, I, I lost my dog. Can you help out? A different community member uh messaged us on uh Facebook and said, hey, we, we found a dog, right? And here's the picture we were able to connect the two. And it was a successful uh reunion of Benji, um, the dog. And so um, we do engage with our community on, on social media. Don't hesitate to contact us with questions. And just like Assembly Member Santiago, constantly getting you the most updated information uh via those channels. So with that said, again, we want to thank the Assembly Member and we'll transition on to talking a little about COVID vaccination.
Bye-bye, guys.
Take care. Thanks for being with us. So with COVID vaccination, uh, you've heard from us, you've heard from um other staff members within LAUSD that for students ages twelve and over, um, there is going to be a requirement that, that students be vaccinated for COVID nineteen to participate in in-person learning. Uh, the chart that's displayed on the screen right now is the number of eligible students twelve and over at each of our schools. We want to give a special shout out to two schools within our community that are already over the seventy percent mark for vaccinations. Those are Boyle Heights High School, leading the charge with over eighty-six percent of their students vaccinated and Boyle Heights STEM over seventy percent. So congratulations to those schools. Um, we're going to continue working with all our schools to ensure students have access to vaccines and are supported um with the uploading process. I do want to go over the timeline with our families today. So students ages twelve and over who participate in extracurricular programs uh need to have their second or final dose by an October thirty-first deadline. A- after that, students twelve and over cannot participate in those extracurricular programs um if they're not vaccinated. For everyone else, all other students, if you can go back to Maritella, the uh first dose deadline is November twenty-first so that you can be vaccinated uh by December nineteenth for the second dose. Uh, as students turn twelve, they have thirty days after their birthday to get that first dose. Uh, we are supporting you with uh submitting proof of vaccination to LA Unified. Uh, please don't hesitate to give our office a call if you need assistance, but the process is very simple. Take a photo of the vaccine card that your child receives the day he or she was vaccinated, log into the Daily Pass that you use each and every day um to do the daily health check and submit a photo of the vaccine card. And then uh, our uh, the LAUSD COVID Response Team will go ahead and uh review that upload and that processing can take up to a week. We, you can also book vaccine appointments on the Daily Pass. And in the chat, we'll go ahead and post some of those directions. The process is very simple. In addition to booking appointments when schools have onsite clinics, and, and we've done many and will continue to do so, uh, students can bring a paper consent form and actually walk in and get vaccinated that day. Here's a list of upcoming uh mobile vaccinations within our community. Uh, underlined in red are some of the schools within our community of schools. So Holland Beck will have a uh vaccination clinic on November fourth, Mendez, November twelfth, Roosevelt and MSTMA um are today, actually. So if you want to get a vaccine, cruise on over there. Let your student who's a, uh, your child who's a student there know. Um, and Stevenson on November fourth. Uh, we are incentivizing families to get vaccinated. Every week, LA Unified is raffling off a number of great prizes uh to students and their families uh who have uploaded proof of vaccination onto the Daily Pass, have submitted a medical exemption or are conditionally admitted. The, these flyers highlight some of the great prizes that are going to be raffled off in the near future. So next week, two schools, two lucky schools um can potentially get up to ten thousand dollars to support athletic programs. There's LA Laker game tickets, a hundred dollar Amazon gift cards. The following week, we're talking beach headphones. Again, the hundred dollar Amazon gift cards. Um, and then the week after that, Los Angeles Football Club games, um, and Amazon gift cards. So lots of great prizes. I also want to let everyone know that as a community of schools, we are supporting schools directly with school vaccination incentives. Schools are developing their plans. And at each school site, there will be great incentives for students to get vaccinated and upload their proof. This week, we already got it started. Students at Roosevelt High School who are showing proof of vaccination are able to go to the student store and get a ticket to the East LA Classic free of charge. No cost for students who are vaccinated. So they simply have to show proof, go to the student store, uh, or sorry, the dean's office, get a voucher, and then they can go to the student store and get that ticket free of charge to the big game Friday night.
Thank you so much, Dr. Gettinger. And next, um, Michelle Correa will be sharing with us about how Boyle Heights and our Boyle Heights Schools are promoting a college-going culture. And here at Boyle Heights, we want to ensure that these three areas are being covered within each school in terms of an awareness, ensuring that every student here in Boyle Heights increases awareness and understanding of post-secondary options and resources, that they're eligible, that they increase passage of A through G courses with a C or better and completion of the requirements necessary for college, that they're prepared, increasing student aspirations and beliefs in college attainment and develop knowledge and skills disposition, knowing they do want to go to college and they have the opportunity to choose to. Access, increasing college access for underrepresented populations and, and activities related to college planning, admissions and financial aid. And then again, fulfillment, increasing the number of students enrolling, attending, persisting and completing college. And so next, Michelle will review a few of those resources and programs available at Boyle Heights Community Schools and within our schools.
Good morning, everyone. So uh, like Ms. Sanchez mentioned, we have the A through G requirements, which are A through G courses in high school that students are taking in order for them to be able to successfully complete California State University and the University of California system requirements. The goal for A through G curriculum is to ensure students have obtained core subject knowledge that will effectively prepare them for college. That means they need to take three years of history or social science, four years of English, three years of math, two years of science, two years of a language, one year of visual performing arts and one year of a, of an, of a college elect. In the chat, I'll also be um providing additional resources for our families. And within LAUSD, um, as Ms. Sanchez mentioned, we do emphasize college awareness. And so all LAUSD junior and senior students um have received or will receive a college journal. Um, all school sites were um mailed out a copy of this item. If your child is currently enrolled in the virtual academy, they can contact the local district council coordinator for their copy. Until yours arrive, you can see a digital version that will be provided in the chat as well. And here are a few steps to just give an overview of the college application process. So number one, do your research on colleges. Work on your resume and personal essays. Test yourself by signing up or taking the SAT or the ACT. Find money by applying to FAFSA or the Dream Act or even scholarships. Apply on time to your selected colleges. Keep focused by constantly checking your email, keeping up your grades and attendance. Make your choice by reviewing college acceptance offers and selecting the right college for you. Stay connected by signing up for orientation, scheduling a meeting with your new college counselor to help registering for college courses. And here are some couple, some reminders for just high school seniors. So we do have the FAFSA, which it is um currently open, which is the free application for federal student aid, which is a form your child needs to complete in order to receive financial aid from the federal government to pay for college. Lots of states and colleges also use the FAFSA to determine which students need financial aid and how much they will receive. We also have the California Dream Act, which allows undocumented and non-resident students who qualify for a non-resident exemption under AB five forty to receive certain types of financial aid. In addition, the California Dream Act also allows eligible students to pay in-state tuition for any public college in California. Both of these applications are due by March second, but it's highly encouraged to submit them as soon as possible. And lastly, just a friendly reminder, there is a very important scholarship, which is the Coca-Cola Scholarship, which is an achievement-based scholarship only awarded to high school seniors. A hundred and fifty scholars are selected every year to receive a twenty thousand dollar sch- scholarship. The deadline is three days away, on October thirty-first at two PM, two PM Pacific Southern time.
Thank you so much, Michelle, for all that information. And we're very excited to present to you our Boyle Heights College Newsletter. And we want to ensure um that everyone is aware, both our families and our students. And in our newsletter, you're able to, oh, sorry. I think it's going to it right now. Um, let me know if it's not. But we'll be sending it out through um mass communication. We'll also be sending it to you through email and text. We'll be posting it on our website and we'll be posting it on social media. Again, we'll be sharing you up-to-date information regarding college, regarding opportunities for scholarships and regarding any volunteer opportunities and also extrac- extracurricular activities. I don't know if you know, but October nineteenth, we had a FAFSA workshop with our community partner, Inner City Struggle. So you're able to listen to that workshop and where they walked you through different sections of the FAFSA and different sections of the Dream Act. We have information regarding the FAFSA in terms of infographics to help you um understand how the FAFSA and financial aid works. Um, the journals, you can link to the journal um for both seniors and juniors. And then we have monthly information and we'll also be translating this. It is translated into Spanish. Here it is, in, in terms of information, um, in terms of timelines. But you may have done in August, but it's not too late. You could still do some of these. So these are checklists that will provide um information to you. The SAT, although it may not be a requirement, we suggest that your child uh does take the SAT or the S- ACT. And again, different timelines in September, both in English and Spanish. And again, we'll be updating this as we receive information. So we're very happy to be sharing that with you. Also, Inner City Struggle, our community partner, they put out a newsletter that they send and we'll be sharing it on our website and also on our social media in which they specifically share scholarships with you and also extracurricular activities and program opportunities. So this is also a great resource that we'll be linking up in our newsletter as well as posting on our social media and website. And next, Veronica Chafoni will be sharing with you some information regarding, from her office um in LDE, within the PACE unit.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sanchez. Hi, everybody. My name is Veronica Chafoni and I'm here with my dear colleague, Laura Banuelos. And we, first of all, want to just um thank you for joining us today. But also, we want to share our number with you. This is our phone number, three, two, three, two, two, four, three, three, eight, two. And we know you may be having a few concerns or just questions regarding some of the things that are coming up in our district. And so I invite you to just um hold on to that phone number. And if you need to reach us, please do so. We have some upcoming events. We would like to also invite you to our LCAP study group. Uh, the next um session will actually take place Wednesday, um, November tenth, uh, twenty twenty-one. This is a virtual meeting. And you see here the uh meeting ID. And it will take place uh via Zoom from nine thirty to eleven thirty AM. We also have an E-LIG study group. And this is for our parents that are parents of English learner students. So we would like to also personally invite you. This is one of the uh study groups that I personally lead. So it would be my pleasure if you were to join me on this day. The next meeting coming up would be November twelfth, twenty twenty-one. This is also a virtual meeting, will also take place via Zoom. And you will find the um, the meeting ID as well as the time from nine thirty to eleven thirty. We also want to just reintroduce you if you have not already become familiar with the PCS um website. And as you can see, we have a Bitly here that you will have e- easy access to make sure that you uh get all the up-to-date information in regards to anything related with resources for parents. This is a great um program here, the uh Choices, also known as Opciones, uh, program um for any family that is interested in a dual-language program, um, also a magnet program. So please know that the deadline is approaching. So the deadline, the window has now opened and it is from October first until November twelve. So we ask that you please, please complete your application if this is one of the programs that you're interested in. This is the hotline, the LAUSD hotline, um, Nofo- This is the hotline, the LAUSD hotline, um, and the phone number. And we just always want to share this with our community because we want to make sure that if there are any questions that you feel, uh, need to be answered as soon as possible, you have somebody to talk to. So this is the phone number, two, one, three, four, four, three, one, three, zero, zero. And last but not least, I want to reshare our LAUSD, um, PACE unit, and this is directly at Local District East. If you do not have a live person answering the phone, please leave us a message, Spanish, English. We will make sure to call you back within the next, within twenty-four hours. So again, that phone number is three, two, three, two, two, four, three, three, eight, two. Thank you so much for inviting me here.
Thank you so much, and thank you for sharing such valuable information with our parents. Just a few more resources, um, you're able to take a snapshot of this in terms of resources to help your children at home around literacy. There is a program called Read Theory where it offers online reading and free resources for all ages and at all reading levels. Um, the standard, the smarter balanced assessment, which students from third through eleventh grade will be taking around April or May. So these are resources where students can log on and take practice tests for free. So we encourage you to use that and that is actually in English Language Arts and Math and in Science. Um, for LPAC, for our students who have not reclassified and are classified as English learners, we know that they'll be taking, um, the LPAC assessment, uh, this year as well. And so they have the opportunity to take practice tests and for you to review, um, what they will be tested on. And lastly, um, wide open school, our resources and activities in Spanish for learning at home. So again, we'll be sharing these also on our website and social media. We have some great parent meetings coming up. We've partnered with Power My Learning to offer parent workshops. The first on November eighth, which is coming up. And we know that for elementary, we have parent conferences coming up the week after. And so maybe there's times where you show up to parent conferences and, um, you might not know what questions to ask or you're trying to identify, you know, which questions are the best questions to help your child at home. So they will be reviewing how to share your expertise with teachers. Again, November eighth at five thirty in English and in Spanish at six thirty. And then November fifteenth, we'll have self-care for family wellness. And then December sixth, we'll have navigating cyberbullying and social media. You do need to register for these workshops, um, and then you'll receive a link. So again, this is the flyer for the registration for the November eighth. Again, in English at five thirty and Spanish at six thirty. Join from your computer, your kids can join as well and be ready to engage, learn and play. So if you want to go ahead and take a picture of this or hold up your phone to the QR code, that way you're able to register right now. And we'll be posting this as well. And now Mr. Ibarra will be sharing regarding the parent workshops he's leading.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Sanchez Robles. Uh, hello, everyone. I'm the mental health consultant for the Boyle Heights Community of Schools, Hector Ibarra. And I just wanted to share with you a series of workshops that we're doing once a month on different mental health, uh, topics. So, uh, we just had one in October on brief and loss. And so we have the next one coming up November sixteen and it's on self-care for parents. A lot of times we focus on taking care of our children, but it's important also for us to take care of ourselves as parents so we can be at our best and be the best parents we can be. Um, and so December seventh, also the following month, it it will be on trauma awareness, learning more about trauma and how it impacts us and our children. And so we just welcome you to join us. It's a Zoom meeting. You see the meeting ID and passport there. You can also, um, if you find the flyer on our Boyle Heights Community of Schools website, that's the QR code. If you, uh, ta- take a picture of that QR code, it'll take you to the room, the Zoom room automatically. We also have another series. This one's open for the whole district. We started it this week, but you're not late. You can still join us for the next three Tuesdays in a row. And it's, uh, every Tuesday from three to four thirty. Uh, the next one is November second and it's called Resilient Families and it's a series of workshops where we talk a lot about how we can identify our own emotions as parents and how that that impacts us as parents, uh, how we can manage our stress, uh, and really how we can be resilient in life. And how all of those things can impact also how we parent our children. And, um, it's a wonderful workshop. There's a lot of interaction and we ask you to participate, even though it's open to the whole district. Uh, we ask for your, your participation. You can also, uh, click on the QR code there, uh, to connect to the registration. And the meeting ID is also there available, uh, for Zoom.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ibarra. And next, uh, Ms. Rainea Masculita, Director with Early Ed Education, will share a resource.
Morning Boyle Heights community. Do you have a child between the ages of birth and eight years old? Do you have questions about their growth and development, their behaviors? Do you need some parenting support? Well, we have a how, mental health consultation line for you. Call two, one, three, four, four, three, zero, one, six, five. It's open between the hours of eight and five, Monday through Friday. And all calls are answered by an early childhood mental health consultant. Please give them a call if you have questions about your child's growth and development, any challenges with school and learning, and any support you have, you need with parenting resources. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for this great resource for families of children, of young children. Again, we want you to connect with us. Um, these are the various ways in which you're able to connect with us. We send out a community of schools newsletter every month. We send it through, um, mass communication, whether it be a phone call, an email or a text. And it's also posted on our website and also shared through social media. Please email us at boyleheightscost@lausd.net, or maybe you'd like to call us instead. David Gaetan is there in our welcome center at two, one, three, three, zero, two, three, zero, two, six. Um, if someone does not answer, please leave a message and David or or one of our support staff will get back to you um, in a timely manner. Follow us on social media, Facebook, Instagram, Twitter. And also our Boyle Heights website is boyleheightscost.lausd.net. And lastly, we'd like to answer any questions that maybe weren't answered or maybe we just want to review, um, that we received in the Q and A or through the chat.
Uh, thank you, Maricela. So, uh, many of the questions we, or all of the questions we've been able to get to in the chat, um, almost all of them have related to our vaccine requirements and and timelines. And so what I'm going to do is in the chat, I'm going to once again post the LAUSD COVID Frequently Asked Question website. Encourage you, if you still have questions after attending our town hall, to go to the website. Um, there's quite a lot of questions and answers there. And if you do have additional questions, you can call us, um, at the number previously provided. I, again, want to thank, uh, everyone for joining us today, both here in the Zoom as well as the many more who join us via Facebook, either live, um, via the stream or later in the day at a time that's more convenient for them. Um, so thank you for being with us and and we're here to serve. So please don't hesitate to get in touch if there's anything we can do to help you, your child or your school. Uh, take care and have a great day.